We're back. Colleges for the doing some marketing discussions. Our first order of business will be to go through the community service awards.
It's actually, we'll invite Mike McAllister and Alice Malnikoff to come forward and talk to us about this. And just as part of setting the table for this, this is always one of the best evenings of the year, not only because of the weather and all the lovely students and their parents that we have with us tonight, but also it's a way of recognizing the very important work that our students do in terms of community service, not only for the community of Belmont, but also for the larger, greater Boston community. So, we're delighted to recognize you tonight, and I'd like to turn it over to Mike.
I just wanted to come here tonight and just say congratulations to all the students that are here receiving these awards. Community service is a program in Belmont that we start in 6th grade, and then we see that it goes all the way through 12th. And I've had quite a few of these students in 6th grade. And I remember, it's a program that when I was a 6th grade teacher, I know we all felt a real commitment to. And it's something we really wanted to pass on to the kids. And it's great to see so many people, not just my former students selfishly, but so many of you that started this in 6th grade and have continued on. So, I wanted to just say thank you, but also congratulations, and thanks also for the example that you set for future students who will come through. Some of those 6th graders may be younger brothers and sisters who are starting it now. It's a great example, and we're really appreciative of all your effort. I'll bring Alice Malnikoff. She is, of course, the person that makes it all happen, so I'll bring her to say a few words a little bit more about the program, and specifically about the recipients tonight.
Welcome. This is really a great night. The President's Volunteer Service Award is a national campaign to promote and recognize continuous sustained service among Americans of all ages. At the high school level, students who complete at least 100 hours of service in a 12-month period are honored at three different levels. Students who perform 100 to 174 hours of service, no small amount, earn the bronze award; 175 to 249 hours, the silver; and over 250 and over, the gold. This year, there are 118 Belmont High School students who will be receiving the Presidential Awards. Tonight, we'll be honoring 43 seniors who represent actually 15.5 percent of the class of 2008, which is really a huge achievement. If we assume that on the average, each student in the high school is performing 10 hours of service in order to get the 40-hour requirement done, we would expect that somewhere under 12,000 hours would be done by everybody at the school. For some reason, I went on a statistics kick, and for the first time, I decided to try and figure out how many total hours everybody in the school has done, or everybody in the school has reported, which is actually an underestimate. And I am delighted to report to you that rather than the under 12,000 hours, this year, between May 1st of 2007 and April 30th of 2008, there were 31,057 hours that were The 43 seniors that we honor tonight are responsible for 8,144 of those. So, really, congratulations, it's a huge.[244.81][244.81](APPLAUSE). These students have participated in a huge array of service opportunities. Many have done service in Belmont schools, helping in classrooms, helping at Saturday morning music, helping in aftercare programs. Many have participated in the Class Connectors Program at the high school, welcoming new students into BHS. Students have worked in shelters, in hospitals, in nursing homes, and museums. They've worked with children in nonprofit summer camps and with the developmentally delayed. Some have raised money by walking for many causes and have staff suicide prevention hotlines. Others have become civically engaged in support of political candidates, and have worked to make the world greener through environmental organizations. Some have chosen to serve in communities beyond, far beyond our own, perhaps rebuilding in New Orleans or Mississippi, two years after Katrina has struck, and others have run free eye clinics in Armenia. They are indeed an inspirational group. We'd like to present certificates and pins to them now. As soon as the real certificates and letters signed by George W. Bush have arrived from Washington, we will get those to you, and that will definitely be before the end of the school year. So, I'd like to call those seniors receiving the bronze award for performing 100 to 174 hours to come up as I call them.[341.31][341.31](APPLAUSE). Becky Clary. James Myers. The Harp Alvis. Will Leavitt. So, Jill McDonough. Harry McTague. Ashley O'Brien. Katie Cork. Holly Rodgge. Dan Rogers. Richard K. Inver Siole. Monica Goodman. Dan Jen. Straight from the playing field, Michael Guler.[454.13][454.13](APPLAUSE). There are some people who couldn't be here tonight, Sam Guyber, Alex Laffey, John Morrissey, Matt O'Neil, and Tara Reynolds, and we honor them as well.[472.81][472.81](APPLAUSE). Five seniors are earning the silver award for doing between 175 and 249 hours of service. I would ask them to come up as I call their name. Michaela Hebert.[491.13][491.13](APPLAUSE). Aisha Nansakobin. And Danny Selbre. Chris Krugnally was not able to be here tonight. Finally, there are eight students who have earned the gold award for performing over 250 hours of service this year. They are Suzanne Action.[531.16][531.16](APPLAUSE). Julian Young. Louisa Martin-Rosen. Michael McNamara. Patrick Moore. And Greg Terosian. And we have two gold winners who are not able to make it tonight, and they are Marcia Villa-Roe and Lamatine Gracia.[577.16][577.16](APPLAUSE). We are not done. There are six students who deserve, oh, wait, there's somebody else. One of them's fresh from the playing fields also. Bronze winners, Matthew O'Neil and Sam Guyber.[594.16][594.16](APPLAUSE). We admire your commitment. So, there are six students who deserve special recognition for their longstanding service records. These six have won Presidential Service Awards for each of their four years at Belmont High School. Collectively, they have performed 4,090 hours of service during their high school careers. Deanna Conti.[631.16][631.16](APPLAUSE). Fourth-year winners earning bronze. Fourth-year winners earning silver this year are Winston Hill.[645.16][645.16](APPLAUSE). Tom McCann. And finally, there are three students who are earning gold this year, who have earned the award for four years, and they are Isabel Carey.[667.16][667.16](APPLAUSE). Amanda Alakis. And I just want to mention Amanda, because when I added her hours up, they came to over 1,000 hours in the four years.[688.16][688.16](APPLAUSE). And Lilin Wong is also receiving gold this year.[696.16][696.16](APPLAUSE). Congratulations to all. I'd now like to call on Will Leavitt to talk briefly about the role of a particular community service experience that he has had over two years while he's been at the high school.
My name's Will Leavitt, and every week, I volunteer at the Samaritines in Boston, where I've been volunteering for a year and a half now. The Samaritines is a suicide prevention hotline run for teens by teens. It's a hotline that provides support to over 5,000 callers every year. The calls are free, confidential, anonymous, and nonjudgmental. They give teens a place to express feelings of suicide, loneliness, or stress, and receive compassionate support and acceptance. Every call begins with the same five words, "Samaritines, can I help you?" But after that, no two calls are the same, and this is part of what makes Samaritines so unique for me. In a time when so much help is given through medication, and books, and online services, the Samaritines continues to provide a place where individuals are treated as exactly that, individuals, and are given respect and understanding for whatever they are going through. For me, as well as for the caller, the one-on-one nature is very important. It gives me the personalized aspect that I so value when doing service, and it gives the callers a real person that they can talk to, and who can react to their specific issues. The hotline, or more accurately, the helpline, is staffed by what we call "befriended," trained teen volunteers who commit three hours a week to answering calls on the helpline. Most of the callers who we befriend are just like you or me. They just need someone to talk to who will listen to what they have to say. The Samaritines gives people the chance to have their emotions validated without being told what to do or inundated with advice, which brings me to my favorite aspect of the Samaritines, something that we don't do. We don't give advice. Most suicidal callers feel like they have lost control of their lives and are in pain over their inability to make their own decisions. By not offering advice, we are keeping the decision-making in their own hands and helping them to regain control of their life. You may ask then, if we are not giving advice, then what are we doing? Mostly, just listening. Even for non-suicidal callers, and in fact, the majority of the callers that we get aren't suicidal, they have been given advice from all angles, and the Samaritines provides a place where they can just be listened to and have their feelings validated and respected for exactly what they are. I think we often forget the power that listening holds. Usually, when I tell people what I just told you, that I volunteer at a suicide hotline, they usually comment on how intense it must be, or how depressing it must feel to take a call. But for me, it's quite the opposite. The satisfaction I get in knowing that a small thing I have done has made a huge difference in someone's life is something that I can get nowhere else. And every week, I look forward to my time at the Samaritines. For my part, I feel like it's a small thing to give to sit for three hours a week and listen to people, but I have seen time after time after time how listening for just 10 minutes can turn around someone's day, or week, or month, or even life.
So, again, I want to say congratulations to everyone in this room, from family who have supported their students, to the students, to the school committee who has supported this program, and definitely to Dr. Holland, who has, for his tenure, been one of our staunchest supporters. So, thank you.[957.16][957.16](APPLAUSE).
Once again, I want to thank all the students. I especially want to thank Alice and Mike, and before Mike, Mike Carvey, and then Herb Baker, who have worked with this program through many, many years. It's been a terrific program, and it seems to me it grows every year. It's not only what you learn in the classrooms, it's also what you learn outside the classrooms to help other people that will really make a difference in your lives, and also in the lives of others, and so I really appreciate what you've done here. And I'd love to get a copy of Will's talk that I could share with the school committee. It's just very, very well done. Well, it's very good. Oh, good.[1005.31][1005.31](LAUGHTER). Thank you again.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for making the school system look so good to both the rest of the town and the people outside of Belmont. You are probably like the only contact some people have with Belmont, and you make us look really good, so thank you for that. And anything else for this?
I don't think so.
Thank you for coming, and feel free to stay for the rest of the school committee meeting, we'll be here in two or three hours.
Or four.
Are we ready?
Putting up Mike and the students.
Ready, Paul? All right, we just, the school committee is back. We just gave Presidential Service Awards to 118 Belmont High students for lots of community service, various levels, various awards, various numbers of hours served. I think we'll go right to the superintendent report, or do we?
Sure. Well, yes, I'll do my report at the end. The next item we have is the student advisory council, and bring the students up, and then we have the remembrance of Mae Golding.
Welcome back. All right. Want to start by introducing yourselves, and if you're a senior, tell us where you're heading.
I'm Mark Howlett. I'm a senior, and next year, I'm going to take the year off, gap year before school, and do some music, and some travel, and some working.
Okay.
My name is Sharon Callahan. I'm a junior.
I'm Jason Yamal.
I'm John Yen.
I'm Josh Nelson. I'm a sophomore.
Okay. So, what do you have for us?
We'll start off, we have some good news. The high school had its first promenade before prom this year, and we're very pleased to say that there were absolutely no behavior issues, and everyone loved it, and it was a lot of fun. I was there. That was my first prom, and I really enjoyed it a lot, and I think all my friends did too. So, all of a really good experience, and I think definitely something to repeat for next year, too.
So, how did Mr. Harvey look?
Everyone looked really amazing.[1209.16][1209.16](LAUGHTER).
And then, also, just to like report back, I guess, on things we had talked about earlier, we ended up having our spirit week in January, and that went really well. We had four days of when kids came in themes every day, and then that ended up, we had our semi-formal dance on Saturday night of that week, and we sold a little bit over 500 tickets to that, so that's a pretty big dance for us. And also, we used the contract, the new contract for that, so everything was good.
So, the students are receptive enough to the contract?
Yep.
And there were some lunches that students from each class had with Mr. Harvey to talk about some issues, or some stuff that Mr. Harvey was like, well, the administrative was to talk to the students, they kind of perfected. They weren't so perfect. The students usually makes two committees in the beginning of the year for the goals, and this year it was communication and face issues. And communication, we thought, we had to have communication between the administrative and the students in order to communicate, like, what's wrong with some rules, maybe some facilities, and, for example, how we restricted people, we started to cap. There was just, people didn't take it too well, and we had some lunches with Mr. Harvey to talk about the issues, and then maybe concerns from the students as well. So, that went pretty well.
And we also met a lot with the environmental club this year, or towards the beginning of spring more, to talk about how we can make the high school more environmentally friendly, and also to sort of, to go along with the lunches, to increase student responsibility in the school, or keeping the cafeteria clean, and the bathrooms clean, and things like that. So, that's another reason that the meetings were held. It was pretty good overall.
Okay. How about, anything else for this year?
Well, these are our two new members. And then Amanda, who is another senior who's leaving us, so she couldn't be here today.
Where's she going to college?
She's going to Sarah Lawrence.
Okay. So, how do you, do you do your goals for next year soon? Do you start thinking about that, or do you wait until September, October?
Well, we're always thinking to next year.[1359.16][1359.16](LAUGHTER).
Anything in mind?
Definitely to continue the Clean and Green Campaign. We certainly want to keep making the school cleaner and increase student responsibility in the building, because that's something I think could always use a little bit of work.
You think it's spreading that out to the younger kids, too? Or is that beyond your scope?
To the other schools?
Yeah.
We could. I mean, we tried to, more, instead of us being the head of it, having the environmental club helping them out with what they wanted to do. So, for instance, they want, they're planning a, yeah, a pond, and different things, so things that they couldn't do alone, we can help them out.
John, I don't know who will be driving the decision about how to handle the decisions next year about the promenade and the prom, but if your group is part of that, I wanted to give you feedback that I've gotten from parents, that while some of the kids who participated were quite comfortable, not everyone was, and that maybe next year, as you go through the decision-making process, being open to maybe changing it to accommodate some of the kids' needs who weren't as comfortable would be something I would urge all of you to do. So, thank you for that.
Thank you. If you don't mind, that was a concern that we had beforehand, and the way it ended up happening was not exactly the way it originally had been thought up originally. I think that we're going to be, everyone's names were going to be announced as they came across, and in order to, you know, make everyone feel comfortable, we, I think we brought for that.
So, ratcheted it down a little.
But for next year, obviously, we'll be thinking of any way to make it better.
Thank you very much for that.
All right. Anyone else? You have any questions for us? No. All right. Thanks, and good luck.
Thank you.
Enjoy your summer, and college, and everything.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bye now.
Next segment.
Mark's going to stay with us? Good. Okay. Thank you.
Is this your last time?
It is my last time.
Next, talk about the Maeve Golding Remembrance.
There's a committee that's been formed, and Chris Francis has been in regular contact with me. Both Mike and Mary Beth Golding are here tonight, as well as a number of teachers from the Burbank, and some members of the committee. And I'd like to turn it over to Chris, and she can introduce everyone, and then tell us what the program will be. And we want to present this information for school committee approval tonight.
Excellent. Very good. Thank you very much, Dr. Holland. As Dr. Holland mentioned, there's been a committee that includes parents, and teachers, and some other family and friends of the Goldings, who have been working on fitting remembrance of Maeve Golding. As you know, Maeve died suddenly in September. I'm sorry. And we, the family immediately decide, asked me if it would be okay if donations were made in her name to the Burbank School, and so, of course, I agreed with that. And we have received just a phenomenal outpouring of people who really want to help out. Initially, we received about $25,000 to $30,000. It came in very, very quickly. Since then, we've been getting other amounts of money, and we now have over $50,000. So, the committee has been meaning to try to come up with some things that would really be a good remembrance of Maeve, as well as benefit the school at the same time. So, I'd like to introduce Mike and Mary Beth Golding, who have been really wonderful in terms of working with us, and who have some good ideas, and have been very appreciative all along of the work that the group has been doing. And maybe I'll turn it over to them to introduce the family members, and then I will also introduce Brenda Johnston, who was Maeve's kindergarten teacher, and Eileen Winslow, who was Maeve's first grade teacher. So, I'll turn it over to Mike and Mary Beth, and they do have presentations they want to share, and I will help.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for having us this evening. First, I just would like to introduce myself, Mary Beth Golding, and my husband, Mike. And I'm going to introduce the other members of the, do you want to stand up here?
Just for the cameras, so they can hear you.
And just to introduce the other members of the committee who have graciously given their time and have agreed to help us with this undertaking in Maeve's memory. Brenda Johnston, as Chris had said, was Maeve's kindergarten teacher, whom she loved. And Eileen Winslow was Maeve's first grade teacher, who she started out with this September. Tricia Brodigan is a childhood friend of mine. We actually both attended this school together, went all the way through. It's changed slightly since we were here. My brother-in-law, Harold, that's my mom there. She's not on the committee, but she's very involved. My sister Allison, a good friend of ours, Melanie Culler. So, Mike's brother, Sean Golding, and my brother, Brendan Noonan, and his wife, Kim, is here also. So, these are friends, family, and very supportive people that have been with us from the get-go. And as Chris had said, right after Maeve had passed away, I mean, the entire community was at our doorstep, basically, asking what they could do, and we started initially to receive a lot of flowers, and we thought it would be a good idea, in lieu of that, to have donations made in Maeve's memory to Burbank, not ever, ever thinking that it would turn into what it has turned into now. I mean, at the time, we had envisioned maybe a small bench, or a plaque, or something like that, and the response has been just phenomenal, and as Chris said, we have over $50,000, and it's from students, it's from parents, it's from people we don't even know. So, it's really been amazing. What's been happening so far, we've been having meetings probably twice a month, and we have a preliminary drawing from an architect firm, Decon Company, who is a great friend of the Brodigans, and again, another person who has graciously donated their time and their talents. That coupled with a project manager, Ken.
Brian Kennedy.
Brian Kennedy, who is a good friend of my brother-in-law, Sean, again, someone who is willing to donate his time and talents to the project. This particular drawing was displayed in the lobby at Burbank the week of Maeve's birthday. This particular drawing was displayed in the lobby at Burbank the week of Mae's birthday, and we just kind of wanted to give the students, as well as the parents, and certainly the staff, an idea that of what our vision was as far as the area would go, and also to let them know that this is happening, and gee, you know, maybe you gave your money back in September, and you haven't heard too much about it, and so we kind of wanted to make them a part of that, and solicit any feedback or suggestions that they may have, and there was a box that was situated next to the drawing that you could put your comments in, and all of the comments were positive, some of them were from the students, things such as, "Let's put a bronze statue of Mae,"
Doing our stuff.
Yeah, doing our stuff, and so, notes like that, that, you know, are treasures to Mike and I, but it was clearly very, very well received, and again, a lot of the notes were, you know, "Let us know if we can help." So, where we are right now is, there was actually a meeting scheduled today, which is going to be rescheduled, and that's with the architect firm, the project manager, and some, Mike and some other members of the committee, just to sort of figure out, okay, now what do we do? Because we're not really sure exactly what the next step is, as far as starting the project, so that will be rescheduled for some date in the near future, so we just wanted to bring you up to speed as to what we've done so far. And we, at the last meeting, were discussing the fact that there's a lot of activity at the Burbank during the summer as well, so we are aware that we have to work within those guidelines, and that's fine, we will do so. If you want to add anything?
I don't know if you can describe the projects, we're thinking, Mary Beth and I hit, she hit it in the head, we had no idea this was gonna turn out like this, and how, we thought this would be a bench, or something small, and it's just been absolutely incredible. And we were thinking about a place there, which is behind the existing play area that's already at the Burbank, and there's a grass field behind that, and the kids play on that quite a bit, and play soccer, and baseball, and the like. So we were looking to see if we could redo that area, along with adding a shaded structure right next to the play area, so people that were with their children, or whatever, could sit under, or kids could read, or teachers could hold a class out there in the nice weather, and, you know, give some shade to the area, and so people could enjoy the, you know, whatever they're doing at their...Mae was an active girl, and she loved playing, and she loved climbing, and everything else, but she was also very happy just being alone, playing by herself, so if somebody just wanted to read a book, or just have some time to themselves, they could certainly do that under this structure. You know, we're looking into, there's also another area right by, next to the windows of the school, that we'd like to see if we could fix up, and try to bring it more greenery, you know, more comfortable space that could be used.
A lot of it's really beautification of the area, and the only actual building, new or new structure, if you will, would really be the shaded area here, and possibly some benches, but these black dots that you see here, that's actually some low-level lighting, I believe. And then, we had talked about, you know, once you start to pave this area, it kind of rolls into this next area here, so, you know, depending upon the cost associated, possibly repaving this here, and most of this here is really all landscaping, we were hoping to put in a sprinkler system, and possibly, we would need electricity, obviously, for the lighting, but if there was any way to bring power out to the shaded area, if, you know, if a class was to be taught out there, if they wanted to plug in a laptop, or whatever the case may be. So, we are reaching high, but we feel that due to the fact that most of it is really just landscaping, that we should be able to do something really special with the space. Does anybody have any questions?
Oh, it's wonderful. I love the ideas you're working with, I think it's such a nice tribute to your daughter.
It's coming from a landscape designer herself.
I believe in landscaping. I don't ever see it as just landscaping, I must admit.
The reason that we're really delighted you came to the school committee meeting, the school committee has responsibility for all property that the town gives them under their jurisdiction, so by informing the school committee, and the school committee approving it, then this can move forward, and both Jerry Missel and Bob Martin have attended some of your meetings, as I understand it, and will keep in touch with you, will help you out in terms of any things you need, for example, the power outlets, and access to that, access to water, and so on. I'm sure Bob can help you in terms of locating where that is on the property. It's really a wonderful tribute. The baseball field, as you probably know, is in memory of Brendan Grant, a man who graduated from Belmont High and died on the playing fields just a couple of seasons after that, so it's really making something wonderful out of what was a very, very large loss for you and for the whole community. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to all your donors, too. People who have donated.
And like I said, many that we don't even know, which is just an amazing, amazing thing. Quite honestly, the whole town has been just unbelievable, and to this day, still are. So it's, I grew up here, and one of the reasons why I wanted to come back here, so, speaks for itself, the town.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You can't say enough about the Burbank.
We feel the same way.
And please let us know if there's anything else that you need as well.
Thank you.
Okay, we need a vote on this.
Yes.
Do we need to be nothing specific, or?
Well, I think just to approve the use of the...
The use of the space?
Space.